Good morning, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the board. Thank you for having me again to talk about a COVID update. Again, I'm kind of helping out here as interim health officer until permanent replacement can be found. And so Sarah is not here, is not available today, so I'm going to go ahead and just go through her slides quickly. But basically, the situation is stabilizing, and we're optimistic that things are going in the right direction. So we can go to the first slide there. Thank you. So this is a, on the left side is the total test performed, just to show that we are seeing a little bit of a drop in testing. We're the dark line, the state is the lighter gray line on top, but we can see that we're basically following what's happening statewide in terms of a slightly fewer number of tests being performed. And then on the, the one on the right is the test positivity rate. We're the dark line, which is on the top, still quite high, but is improved from before. And as we know, that when the test positivity is high, we tend to see an increase in cases and a lag time with increase in cases and then a lag time with increase in hospitalizations over time. But so now this does seem to be dropping some. Next slide, please. This is the total confirmed cases. Again, the dark line is the county, the lighter gray line below is the state, and we can see that that's dropping. Next one, please. So this is a really interesting one. This is the Lake County data on vaccinated versus unvaccinated cases in the county from the first two weeks of August. So we could, the bluer one on the left is not fully vaccinated that have become cases, and the one on the right, the dark one, is the fully vaccinated people that have turned positive. So there's a sevenfold reduction in your chances of becoming positive for COVID from the testing that's being done in Lake County if you're vaccinated. So if you're vaccinated, you have seven times less chance of getting the, getting COVID. Next slide, please. So this is the epic curve that we show every week, and you can see on the right side that things are starting to drop and things, the number of cases is improving, and this is Lake County. Next slide, please. This is hospitalizations on the left. This is Lake County hospitalizations. Looks like it's starting to flatten, and the ICU is starting to drop. So this is what we're seeing. The hospitals have been quite full recently, and we've been having some trouble with transport out, but this is, the pressure seems to be relaxing some, so things are starting to improve. Next slide, please. This is the deaths, and so the one on the left is from the state. Unfortunately, we've had now, three folks have passed away over the weekend from COVID, and that hasn't been reflected in the state data yet. So, but yeah, so we're really sad to have that situation come up, but that's what's happened over the weekend. Next slide, please. This is the graph of the people getting first doses. So, you know, it's a way of charting, are we seeing an increase in vaccine, in new vaccinations or a decrease, and this has dropped a little bit in the last week or so. Next slide, please. So this is an interesting slide. We now have a total of over 30,000 people in the county that have been fully vaccinated. So this is quite an accomplishment. We're still at 55% of folks 12 and older that are fully vaccinated, but this is now 30,000, so that's 30,000, well, 60,000 for essentially doses that have been given now since the, since the vaccine became available. So this is pretty exciting that we've gotten this far, and, but that still means that 45% of the people that are eligible have not got vaccinated, are not fully vaccinated, and we want to try to increase that number. Next slide, please. Is that it? Okay, thank you. So I think the most important thing is to just acknowledge that the vaccine continues to be very protective against serious disease and death. We have seen in the hospitals, in our local hospitals, we're not actually able to completely track everybody, to get good data on the vaccinated people that are in the hospital, but when we've taken a couple snapshots at different times, it's pretty clear that the vast majority of folks are, that are in the hospital are not back, for COVID, that are not vaccinated. We now, there's a situation statewide where they're calling it load leveling, where hospitals that are under serious pressure are able to transfer patients to other hospitals in the area that have some vacancies. And we, as of last night, we were, it looked like we were going to be taking two of them from Del Norte, so, because they're, they're in a, in a very difficult situation up there. And so I'm not sure if those folks came in or not, but that was the plan last night. So we'll have to sort of keep track of that data as well. But just to be aware, the state has shifted their rules now to make sure that the places that are getting most heavily impacted have an ability to depressurize the hospitals. And yeah, really sad to see these folks pass away this weekend, and so I want to just acknowledge that, and I appreciate Supervisor Pyska mentioning that earlier and everything, because it's, it hits us all hard when that happens with folks that we know. There is an outbreak in the jail right now. Seven staff are positive, 17 inmates, and 52 inmates are quarantined, so this is like a quarter of the jail that is being impacted. The correctional officers are working with this really closely, and they're taking the proper spread, the proper steps to minimize spread, but you know, as you can imagine, the jail is a very challenging place with so many folks in there, and ventilation isn't the greatest, and everybody's kind of close together. So we're doing what we can to try to slow the spread there, but it's definitely an issue. So I want to talk a little bit about vaccines now. Pfizer yesterday was approved by the FDA, so it's fully approved now, it's no longer under the emergency use authorization. And this will, you know, so this should reassure people a little bit more, folks that have been reluctant because of the incomplete authorization. That is now changed for Pfizer, and Moderna, we expect that to be coming down the road in the near future. Also, boosters have been approved for the folks that are immunocompromised, and they're being, the third shot is being recommended now for folks that have been fully vaccinated starting eight months after the second dose. So some of the data has come out showing that there's been a decrease in immunity starting around eight months, and so we, you know, this, we haven't operationalized this yet, the details aren't out yet, but it looks like that's going to be what the recommendation is going to be in the near future. So as Denise was mentioning, state support for the OptumServe fixed sites is ending, and they're here through the end of this week. The state, we've been asking the state for some help to continue going, and they will give us this mobile team, but they're not going to pay for it at this point. So Denise is going to come forward and ask for the funding through the county from the CARES funds. We do really want to thank everyone that has helped with the OptumServe fixed sites over the last couple months, both the testing and the vaccine sites. So it's been, it's been a really good collaborative effort with some of our county partners, and we really appreciate that, being able to continue after we decreased the, and ended the mass vaccination sites. So there's a plan to set up a vaccine site at one of the entrances of the fair. We're, a lot of the details are still getting worked out, but we're hoping to get it set up so that folks that need vaccination can hopefully get one, and we're working on getting a free entrance for those folks. So the hours and the specifics are still being worked out, and we're getting some help with some local partners as well to do the vaccines. But this is part of the way to try to get vaccines out to where people are at, and Supervisor Sabatier and the supervisors have been really encouraging us to go this way, and it seems like a good idea. So there is a special event on Thursday in Kelseyville that's been put together with the help of some partners, Adventist Health, LCOE, and there's some farmworker allies from the, from Sonoma County that have helped us put together this event on, in Kelseyville Thursday afternoon from 3:00 to 6:00. And there will be information on our website. It's for farmworkers as a target, but it's open to everybody, so if people want to come and get it there, that's the way to do that. Want to talk a little bit about testing? Again, the state support for the Optum sites is over, so they are giving us a capability of doing some testing around the lake, kind of at various sites around the lake. We're still working out those details, so next week we'll be sort of ramping it up. We're not sure exactly what the details will be, so we'll be putting out the schedule for that. But just to let people know, even though the support for the current setup is over as of the end of this week, we are going to have testing, and we are going to continue doing vaccination sites, and we're just, you know, they just cut us off last week, so we're kind of in the process of scrambling to get all that in place. Contact tracing, case investigation, we are starting, really shifting our energies away from that now. We just don't have the staff to continue doing all the different pieces, and it seems like where, where we're going to get the most impact in preventing the spread of future pandemics is by working on vaccines. So we are, there is some state staff helping us with contact tracing, case investigation, but the focus here is going to be for folks, if they're symptomatic or they're in close contact, to go get tested. If you are positive, you can get some information on how to isolate and quarantine and to contact your, the people you've been in touch with, so that we can try to stop the spread. But we're going to have to really ask the community to sort of step up and do that themselves. We've been doing this for a year and a half now, and I think most folks know what needs to happen. We'll have a phone line that people can get their questions answered, but we're not going to be able to be calling everybody up now that's a positive case. The schools are a really important piece of this, and I think we're going to be talking about this more and more going forward. You know, right now, the 12 to 17-year-old group is about 80% of them are not vaccinated. And in the 18 to 49-year-old group, which is the parents of school-aged kids often, 55% of them are not vaccinated. So here we are, putting all these kids into the schools, and yet the vast majority are not vaccinated, even if they're eligible. Under 12 is not eligible at this point, but the older ones are, and we really want to try to encourage both the kids, the parents of the kids, and the school staff to get vaccinated if at all possible. You know, last year, we really had most of the schools not open for the vast majority of the year, and it's not good. And we, the best thing we can do to try to keep the schools open is to get these groups vaccinated and to have the kids wearing masks at the schools. So we're going to be seeing break, outbreaks, we're having some cases coming out of the schools now, and we really want to keep these schools open. So we're going to be putting more and more focus on these groups to try to get the vaccine taken care of so that the schools can stay open. I think what we're going to be seeing is this surge, looks like it's starting to come to some closure, and it's going to start improving here in the coming weeks, but very likely, we're going to be seeing another one in a couple months that could be some mutations with variants, and also with people going back indoors and with flu coming. It just really looks like the fall and winter could be a real problem, and so we really want to get people vaccinated now in preparation for this next surge. So just a few more things, and then I'll be done. The, I did want to address a few of the concerns that keep getting brought up in the public comments when I've been listening to the meetings the last couple of weeks. One is about ivermectin. This is a medication that's been used in veterinary medicine for quite a while. Some people feel like this, that has some activity against COVID. They did a big study recently, and they found that there was no evidence that it was, that there was any real improvement with it, so we are definitely not recommending using ivermectin. There was some talk previously about different vitamins, vitamin C, vitamin D, and all those are probably a good idea. The studies have, you know, been, we haven't really seen clear evidence that they're, they are preventive, but they're low risk, and it seems very reasonable to go ahead and try to use that if you want to. I think the main thing is not to do those things and then ignore the other recommendations of the masking and the vaccination, the things that we have evidence that really does work. These things like ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine, we have evidence that they don't work, the studies have been done, and they don't seem to help, and so I would discourage people from doing that. But the things like vitamin C and vitamin D are probably a good idea. I've also seen some concerns raised about the PCR testing, and you know, we're using these all the time. They seem to correlate with what we're seeing with, with the illnesses and with hospitalizations, so I don't, I don't really think that's a, it seems like more of an abstract academic kind of concern, because in real life, this is how we're identifying people that are sick and trying to prevent it from spreading and from them getting sicker. So I would, you know, I think the recommendations are, I know they've been changing some over time because this is a new virus, and we're trying to understand it as it goes along, but I think the evidence is pretty clear that vaccine and masking is the key to it all. So again, it looks, so in conclusion here, it looks like the surge is settling down, and we're really saddened by the loss of some of our community members over the last weekend. And so please support those families if you know them, and there are likely to be future surges and future variants, so I think, you know, developing good habits now and getting vaccinated now is going to help us in the future. It takes, if you got vaccinated tomorrow, and you got the second one three to four weeks later, it's still two weeks after that before you have full protection, so it's about six weeks from when you decide to get going. I think we're going to really start putting a lot of focus on the schools and the kids and the parents of school-aged kids, encouraging them to get vaccinated. So you know, I just, the messaging is probably going to be coming out, and we're going to be trying to work with the schools to see what we can do about that. I think also we need to kind of work with the local nursing homes and the healthcare facilities to encourage them to get their staff as fully vaccinated as possible, because I think there's a little bit of work we can do there to get, because those folks are particularly vulnerable in getting it and spreading it. So, and the last thing is just that if you have symptoms or are in close contact, get tested and isolate and quarantine, and let the people know that you've been in contact with. This is how we're going to slow the spread of the pandemic, is by when people do get it, to be, to take themselves out of circulation. This Delta variant is very, very contagious, and we're, you know, we're just seeing how some parts around the country are getting really heavily impacted. I think we have now, you know, we've been feeling it the last month or so, and again, but it's, looks like we're probably going to be coming out of this surge in the near future. So that's all from me now, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Pyska.
Thank you, Dr. Pace, for that update. I, I have a couple of questions. I guess, you know, a lot of people have been waiting for the Pfizer approval, and just so it's really clear to everyone, where are the opportunities to, to receive that vaccination throughout the county?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. So at this point, you can go through your medical providers. Most of the medical community is providing vaccines. And the other main place to get it is through the pharmacies. Most of the pharmacies are giving them, we've, actually, this week, we called around all of them just to see what's the availability. Are people able to get appointments? And, you know, most of them that are giving them said they have walk-in capacity, people can just walk in and say they want it, and they can get it within 15, 20 minutes, and nobody's at capacity right now. So there is availability around the county. The Health Department now is doing a few clinics, but I think, you know, we're going to be probably shifting our focus now. We do have this farmworker event on Thursday afternoon in Kelseyville. So you know, there's different places around, you can go on the website and look, but I think the easiest way to do it is either go through your provider or through the local pharmacies right now. That will change, because we were doing them at the OptumServe sites, but now that's going to be eliminated, and depending on how things go with the discussion today, later on the day about the funding for the mobile unit, we may have other sites set up around the lake at different places, different days of the week to offer them that way as well. But yeah, there's going to be the Pfizer approval, so I think that's going to increase demand, and then also the third booster is going to start coming online here in the next month or so, so that, that will be another thing. But I think it's really, really important for the folks that are not vaccinated at this point, or anybody who's open to thinking about it, to get your questions answered and go get it done for this next surge that will probably be coming in in a few months.
And when do we think the approval is going to come for the Pfizer, for the 12 to 17-year-olds?
Pfizer is already approved for 12 to 17-year-olds.
Oh, the, okay. I thought, I thought it was just for 17 or 18 above. Okay, well, that's.
Oh, no, no, yeah, so I'm glad that you asked that, if that's the confusion. 12 and above can get the Pfizer vaccine right now. So if you have a teenage kid and you're interested in getting it, we just need to get you hooked up at one of the sites that offers the Pfizer vaccine and they can get it.
So we're kind of in this mid, middle place with the testing that you were talking about with losing the OptumServe, and I know that the messaging is going to be coming out with where people can get tested, but if somebody had to get tested today or tomorrow, where would they go?
Today and tomorrow, it's the same. The current sites are working through the rest of the week, so they can go to the OptumServe sites just as we've been doing it before. And then starting next week, we're going to start this new, new schedule. Denise, did you want to mention what the situation was?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Pace. I just wanted to clarify, the state is still paying for OptumServe to do testing. They're just switching their model a little. Instead of the brick and mortar, it's going to be a mobile mini, minibus and team. So we are working on the logistics with them on the locations around the lake. They will be working five days a week, and each day will be in, like, in a different district. So the logistics will, as soon as we have those logistics worked out, you know, we'll send out messaging.
So my, my last question is more of a concern. We have the fair starting next week, and it looks like the Del Norte Fair contributed to the surge that that county is facing. And I'm just wondering what the safety measures are planned for the fair so that we don't get back into a bad situation with our surge?
I have not spoken with the fair about the safety measures, so I don't know. Denise or Carolyn, do you know anything, any conversations?
CEO Hutchinson?
Yes, I actually spoke to the CEO of the fair yesterday about this, and, and she told me that they're taking a number of precautionary measures. I asked her if she could be present today, but they're very, very busy getting the fair ready to go, so she couldn't be present. But she explained that they would have signage up at all gates, reminding people of the need to mask and social distance. She said that they had a number of added hand washing stations, and they had hand sanitizer placed, sprinkled all over the fairgrounds. They said one of the wineries had donated some wine barrels, and they had set up stations where people could sanitize their hands and things. So they've done quite a bit more than, than is usual to keep people safe.
I think the number one thing that I would recommend for folks, especially if you're unvaccinated, is to wear masks if you're around many people out there, even though certainly better outdoors, but this, this Delta variant is so contagious that if you're around many people, even outdoors, especially if the air is stagnant, you should wear a mask.
Is there a mask requirement for an event that large?
Not outdoors at this point that I'm aware of. That doesn't mean it's not a good idea.
Supervisor Scott?
I just wanted to add, I know we were talking about our children 12 and up are eligible to be vaccinated, and we have a really low percentage of children that age vaccinated. And just for an added incentive, I know Lakeport Unified School District, if your child has a close contact with something that, somebody that has COVID, and they have no symptoms, and they're fully vaccinated, they can continue to go to school. So for me, that's an added incentive that my children, they're going to have close contacts going back to school, but if they're fully vaccinated, they can stay in school and just watch, have the parents watch the symptoms. So just a good idea to get your children vaccinated if they're eligible, so they can continue to go to school.
Thank you for that. Any further comments?
So I did want to just make a clarification, just because I know a lot of people listen to what we are talking about, and there's a lot of changes that happen, especially changes happened yesterday. The approval of the FDA was for 16 and up for the Pfizer, but it is available still through the emergency approval for 12 and up. And so at this moment in time, the full completed approval by the FDA is for the 16-plus, and they are working on getting the Moderna, which I believe that they say would be in four or five weeks possibly, and then of course, going to the 12 and up as well. Also, I do want to check in on that additional vaccine, and I think there's some confusion. There's the additional dose for those that are immunocompromised, and then there's also the conversation about the booster, and I think those two are easily intertwined as one and the same. And I, the booster right now is being discussed about being available in fall for those that are eight months past their second shot, to possibly re-enhance the protection that the original vaccination afforded. And I'm looking at the CDC website for the immunocompromised, and it says that, again, it's for the specific few that are very immunocompromised, and it says here 28 days after your second vaccine has been completed. So I just want to make sure that we have the correct information, so that those that are reaching out, I've had a few people reach out to me, that I've told to reach out to their primary care providers, to make sure that when we get contact, that we provide the information on what is possible and what is not available, depending on their status. And it's, it's getting difficult because there's multiple varieties of vaccines, there's different varieties of status of people on where they are in the vaccination, where they are in their health status. So I think there's just a lot of moving parts and information, but if we can make sure that we have that information and possibly be able to put that on our website as well to help our public find out where they can, what their, what their status is and what they can do to enhance their protection, I think that would be great.
For, I opened it up for the public, just checking in again. All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anybody in the boardroom wish to speak on this item? Please go ahead and come to the microphone, and you have three minutes.
My question is really simple. If you're vaccinated, what is it that you're receiving? Why do we still have to wear masks?
So at this moment in time, our hospitals are absolutely overwhelmed, which means that if, beyond COVID, if you have a heart attack, if you have a kidney failure, if you have any other type of ailment, there is less probability of you getting the correct care at a hospital right now because of the amount of people that are in our hospitals.
But if we're vaccinated, fully vaccinated, what is it that we're getting?
We're helping the people around us. That is, that is what is happening. Because the virus can still come to you and me, we're both vaccinated, it would seem.
We can carry the virus?
Yes.
Is that correct, doctor?
And Dr. Pace, if you want to respond, I'm sorry if I'm responding for you.
Right, no, this is a good question, because four to six weeks ago, we thought it was very unlikely that vaccinated people could get the virus and spread it, and now we're seeing, we're learning more and more that people that are vaccinated can get the virus and can spread it. But that's where that, that one slide that I showed, where people are seven times more likely to get infected if they're unvaccinated than if they're vaccinated. So you can still get infected, and you can still spread it, but it's much less risk that you're going to get infected if you're vaccinated versus unvaccinated. And I think the main thing is, is the biggest advantage of getting vaccinated is it's very unlikely that you're going to end up in the hospital or die from the COVID if you're vaccinated. It's not impossible, and usually the folks that get in the hospital or end up dying that have been vaccinated are older folks with, you know, not as vibrant immune systems or folks that are immunocompromised from other kinds of issues. So your question is, is why do I need to wear a mask if I'm vaccinated? It's mainly to slow the spread around the community, because you can get infected, you can be contagious, and if we can slow the spread through the community, we're a lot better off.
And the second part of my question, will there be a day when we don't have to wear
I sure hope so.
Yeah, we all hope so for sure. I think, you know, I think most likely what we're going to be seeing is that this will become a kind of a chronic illness, sort of like the cold, once our immune systems get used to it, once we kind of are, become acclimated to it, it'll be more like an annual flu or something like that, where we are dealing with it in a different way. But at this point, because it's so new to our immune systems, a certain percentage of the population just gets overwhelmed and asks them to hospital or is dying, and so we need to take these measures to try to protect the population.
Thank you for your question, sir. Real quick, I'm going to make a pause. We have a hand up from Johanna.
Can I get the name of the service? If he could come up and?
Oh, what was your name, sir?
Steve Estrada.
Steve Estrada. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the boardroom have questions? Please give us your name in three minutes.
Joan Moss. I'd like to know, Dr. Pace, if you are an interim health officer or a health officer? It wasn't made clear. And secondly, I want to know where people can go to get tested for COVIDs. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Dr. Pace?
Well, I'm not working full time like I was before. I had left and been kind of helping out, but we haven't been able to find a replacement yet, so I'm basically working some here and other places as well. So it's kind of helping as best I can during this time. The question about the testing is what we were mentioning before, for this week, it's still the same setup as before. There's the OptumServe sites through your primary care provider, through some of the pharmacies. Starting next week, that'll be shifting a little bit with a mobile testing site going around the county, still with your providers, still with the pharmacies. There are home tests available now that you can get, you can get stuff, you know, so there's a variety of ways to do it. If that's a concern, if people are having trouble finding where to get tested, please let us know at the Milwaukee line, and we'll try to make it more transparent.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions in the boardroom on this item? All right, let's go to the Zoom room, phone 2689, if we can unmute. Again, please provide your name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Christina Robertson. Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say a couple of things, and thank you for hearing me. Well, some people, yeah, some people have said ivermectin is helpful in stages, and that's important, that early stage part. But these people were not just some people, they were highly respected and educated indeed. So that's one thing that I just want to point out. And there are people who have had success treating their patients. There's other doctors who have had success with already approved and known drugs instead of experimental vaccines. And then another thing I want to say is, as far as studies go, there's been quite a few studies on ivermectin, and there's a website, c19ivermectin.com. Seventy-one of them have been peer reviewed. Now, I haven't read all these studies, of course, and don't know what the findings were, but I just wanted to point that out if anybody has that kind of inclination to look. But it does look like there's been improvements, that there is evidence of improvement through these studies, just glancing at it lightly, like I did. And then another thing that I want to say, so I had a college professor who said studies are, you know, you can get a statistic to prove or disprove just about anything you want to prove or disprove, but, you know, who pays for the study? How many people are included in the study? There's lots of variables when you want to look at a study to prove something. And then the other point I want to make is, what's bothering me the most? Okay, if you want to get a vaccine, get one. I don't want one. I don't want to put that in my body, and I'm healthy, and I just don't want to do that. So I believe I should have a choice, and people are not being given choices right now. And, you know, the thought that there's a protocol, a template in place, which I brought this up last week on the CDC.gov website, the template for green, quote, "green camp", places to put unvaccinated people, people who have not complied with the wishes of others. This bothers me. This bothers me a lot, and I know it bothers other people. Okay, someone said, someone on the board said, well, you know, just because.
Your three minutes are up, if you can give us your final statement?
Yes, just because it's on the CDC website doesn't mean they're going to put it in place, but it bothers me that it's there and writing anyway already, that they've thought about it. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Julia Bono.
Hello, can you hear me, Board?
If you can maybe speak either a little louder, a little closer to your microphone.
Okay, trying to do so now. Is that approved?
Perfect, perfect.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Board. My name is Julia Bono, and I have a scientific background that qualifies me to perform and understand scientific research. First of all, I wish to address some potentially harmful misinformation shared by Dr. Gary Pace twice in this meeting, as well as once by a board member. In fact, the FDA did not remove the Emergency Use Authorization, or EUA, for the Pfizer vaccine, as was then stated. Instead, the FDA simply extended the EUA period, which means that this vaccine is still in the experimental stage and should not be represented as safe and effective. That matter was also misrepresented to the public in the media, most notably in New York Times article. My point is evidenced by the FDA's own official documentation published on its website. I will send a link to the board of the official FDA document, the Garyan media outlets, like the New York Times and Missus Everett, so they can review it themselves. For others, I will quote the fourth paragraph in the FDA document, which states, "On August 23, 21, 2021, having concluded that revising this EUA is appropriate to protect the public health or safety under Section 564G2 of the Act, FDA is reissuing the August 12, 21 Letter of Authorization in its entirety with revisions incorporated to clarify that the EUA will remain in place for the Pfizer BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine for the previously authorized indication and uses, and to authorize use of Omicron or not the COVID-19 vaccine mRNA under this EUA for certain uses that are not included in the approved BLA." So that is clear evidence that we are being, facts are being misrepresented to the board. To avoid the spread of such serious misrepresentations and any official actions taken based upon them, I would respectfully suggest that any individuals who are asked to speak in an official capacity, please check their facts with original official sources before sharing it before the board and its audience. Secondly, a recent study suggests that those consuming a plant-based diet are five times less likely than those consuming a low-carb, high-protein diet typical of heavy animal product consumers to suffer moderate to severe COVID-19 symptoms. I provided the board with a link to the most recent version of that paper. Basically, I hear a lot of official support for it and even pressure to employ vaccination as a preventative measure for serious COVID-19 symptoms. Despite the known health risks that include the life-threatening blood clumps, my own sister-in-law suffered shortly after taking the Moderna vaccine, and which was reported by her doctors to the CDC's various database. I am therefore wondering what the county and the Board of Supervisors are doing to promote healthier plant-based diets among its residents that have a similar COVID-19 prevention profile and are notably safer to implement than vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Ahava Rose. Again, please give us your name, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. Ahava Rose from Middletown. Dr. Pace, my father is a NYU graduate, general vascular surgeon who also participates in wound-in-vr care. He graduated from Princeton University in '81 and has written for several medical journals. He's also the great-grandson of Holocaust refugees from Poland and Odessa. Could you explain to me in your own words your understanding of the Nuremberg Code and the ethical medical standards established worldwide?
Let's move on with the comment, please.
Thank you. Does every patient you inject know that the experimental trials aren't over until 2023? And do they know that antibody dependent enhancement is listed on the consent form as the very last item of a laundry list of its side effects? And how are doctors to give their informed consent, if truly informed consent, if all the injection inserts are left intentionally blanked? And what is the intention behind that? And has a respiratory virus ever been eradicated by a vaccine? Being that the DNA sequence of SARS-CoV-2 has genetic elements of SARS, two different kinds of coronaviruses, and HIV, wouldn't you expect a treat with intracellular anti-infectives, corticosteroids, and immunomodulators, and antiplatelet drugs, since viral proliferation is met with both cytokine injury and inflammatory thrombosis? First of all, hydroxychloroquine reduces viral entry. It works as a zinc ionifier, which impairs the RNA-dependent polymerase and is anti-inflammatory. There are 259 supportive trials with over 385,000 individuals showing outpatient studies that demonstrated a 50% reduction in hospitalization and death. Ivermectin also impairs nuclear viral entry and has properties against spike protein itself. Your ABC-funded study compiled late and early preventive, late and early treatments, and that was one study that you looked at, and I'm familiar with it. There are 70 apparently other trials that show a 70% reduction in mortality, and this drug has been available for 40 years and proven safe and effective. Dr. Jim Meehan has graduated medical school, top of his class, and is licensed in 22 different states. He's an expert in scientific research and literature, and he says that the suppression of alternative treatments resulted from medical journals colluding with pharmaceutical industries to create fraudulent research studies discrediting hydroxychloroquine, and that Bill Gates is working towards one on ivermectin. There's been 100-plus years of randomized control trials showing that mask-wearing promotes bacterial pneumonia. Eighty-two percent get headaches, 23% become severe migraines with nausea and vomiting. Charts at RationalGround.org show everywhere masks were mandated saw an increase in hospitalizations and death, and Fauci's emails even show him admitting that masks don't work. And lastly, Dr. Pace, why hasn't Pfizer's CEO taken the shot? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, phone 4627, your name, please, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. This is Tom Slate, and I just had a couple of concerns. What I was hearing, apparently, and I'm generalizing here, the words that ivermectin and HCQ, according to studies, don't work, and those are not the exact words, I don't recall what it is. And I'm reading so much that they do work, and a lot of other treatments, and it's even really inexpensive treatments. So Dr. Pace alluded to some studies, it didn't tell us what they were, but I'm wondering what, and I hate to make it personal, but that's who it was, and I'm operating in good faith, I'm sure he is too, but would he be able to, will he be willing to make a personal statement, his own thoughts, his policy, and maybe even medical advice as to whether these things, maybe people shouldn't be taking them? But anyway, his position on, I'll just say, ivermectin and HCQ, his own personal thoughts on that, and his position on that, so that would be very helpful. Thank you.
So I'm going to allow Dr. Pace to respond to that, but I do want to say, Dr. Pace will not be the doctor in the ER room who makes a decision of what pharmaceutical drugs are required to care for you. He is also not your primary doctor who will go ahead and prescribe you what you need for the best care. And Dr. Pace is also not ordering hospitals to ignore any possibilities of any healthcare solutions when it comes to COVID-19. From what I understand and know, Dr. Pace is conveying information that he has been provided and researched, and trying his best to keep us up to date on what is happening with COVID-19 and how to best be cautious in the unfortunate situation that we have to deal with. And Dr. Pace, I'll let you respond.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, you know, I'm a primary care doctor, I do take care of patients, and I see people a lot, and the way we make these decisions, so you're kind of talking about specific patient treatment for sick people. That seems to be what a lot of the focus is here. What I've really been talking about through most of this is kind of a community-based approach to how to slow down the pandemic and how to prevent people from getting sick so that they don't end up in the hospital. But when I do take care of people, as a doc, we use this sort of pathway of looking at medical studies, clinical studies, and, you know, it's a very imperfect science. We're always trying to weigh and balance versus benefits, and what the, most of the studies have been showing that have been done, the kind of the quality I'm used to thinking about, have not shown benefit for hydroxychloroquine or ivermectin. And there's been a lot of interest in it, there seems to be a lot of interest in the alternative community, but the conventional medical community has done some studies on these and have not seen the kind of effects that we need. But again, as Supervisor Sabate was saying, you know, I'm not prescribing for most of those people in the hospital that are sick. There are some things that have been shown to be useful, the monoclonal antibodies, remdesivir, some of those have, do show some benefit, but it's not huge benefits, but they do help at certain stages, and then, yeah, if people get sicker, it's, you're looking at steroids and other kind of immune modulators. But so I think it's, you know, there's a way that we look at things in the medical community that tries to understand what shows benefit and what doesn't. And these things have been studied, and they don't, they aren't rising to the surfaces as ways to really show positive impact. But, and I think the preventative questions of a good plant-based diet and all that, I think those are great ideas. I would totally encourage that. But once somebody's sick, you know, then it's a different story. So I think the main thing is, is whatever people end up choosing to do or what their beliefs are about this, I just want to really encourage them to, some of these things have been proven to benefit, and I would encourage people to use those.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Phone 6205, please provide your name, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you so much. I'll be very brief. I've been monitoring you both on Zoom by phone since the beginning of the meeting and Zoom online, and I just want to make sure that you know that on Zoom online, the meeting was not up and running until 10:13. So from 9:00 to 10:13, the meeting today has not been available online.
I'm not sure what you mean, since I've been watching the attendees, and the list has been pretty packed with people. I'm not sure if you mean Facebook, but.
Yes.
Well, Facebook is a, an extension of what we do, a Zoom, and in the chamber is the main place that if you want to communicate with us, you can communicate. If you just want to watch us, we will be absolutely posting the video as we always do, both on Facebook and on our website. So please continue with your comment. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the body of my comment.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next is phone 1113, and again, please provide your name, and you have three minutes.
Yes, hi, this is Dr. Will Tuttle. Okay, I'm speaking on behalf of the thousands of people here in Lake County who want to take responsibility for their own health and who don't trust the criminally corrupt pharmaceutical corporations, who have immunity from any prosecution for the deaths and the injuries that they're causing us. The only immunity in this is for the pharmaceutical industry, the people who are getting vaccinated, getting sick and dying at unprecedented levels, and you are all deceiving us and are part of the criminal agenda that is happening throughout California. Amid this nonstop storm of fear porn that you and Big Pharma are spewing, I would like to say something positive, that we can take responsibility for our health and celebrate our lives on this beautiful earth, and not be afraid of each other, and not be afraid of germs. I wrote a book called The World Peace Diet, and it became a number one Amazon bestseller worldwide back in 2010, has been published in 17 languages. I've traveled all over the world.
If we can prohibit from shameless plugs in your public comment, that would be great.
No, I'm just saying, I'm saying that the basic idea in this book is that when we take responsibility for our health and treat each other with kindness and love and celebrate our lives with creativity, that we'll be healthy, and that fear and exploitation and violence and toxic poisons are what make people sick. I've traveled all over the world, China, Korea, Southeast Asia, Middle East Africa, Eastern Europe, Western Europe, South America, and all 50 states, spreading this message, which is a wide. which is a wide message getting to more and more people. And with all this traveling, I've never gotten sick in the last 50 years. I've never been to a drugstore or had a prescription drug of any kind in the last 50 years. No need for aspirin, Tylenol, Viagra, Right Guard, Rolase, prescription medications, all these other poisons that people are indoctrinated into buying. So if we did, if everyone did like I'm doing and took responsibility for their health, Big Pharma would be out of business, and we'd be free. The problem is that people have been brain poisoned and not taking responsibility for their health, and that's causing tremendous sickness everywhere. That's the most important thing, to realize that when we eat an organic, whole-food, plant-based diet, and do our best to minimize the suffering and exploitation we cause to cows and pigs and chickens and fishes, and when we eat organically grown food without pesticides, herbicides, and fungicides, we can create a wonderful foundation for health for ourselves and for everyone. Compassion and joy are the pathways to health, not the fear, cruelty, and violence promoted by the medical-pharmaceutical food complex. Additionally, we are called to cultivate healthy, positive, loving relationships, as well as a mental attitude of joy and gratitude every day, and live a life inspired by a purpose to help make a better world. These are the keys to radiant health that real doctors and real supervisors would be recommending, and exercising creativity in our life. Then we're creating a beautiful life that will spread love and health to everyone. That's what we should be focusing on, not all this fear that Big Pharma is propagating. That's how you get people sick, through fear and through recycling and breathing in our own exhaust, and getting hypoxia and brain damage and lung infections from these ridiculous masks, and the lockdowns and the toxic poisons in these vaccines.
And your three minutes are up. Thank you very much. Next is Amanda Brock. Again, please, uh, give us your name in case that's not the correct name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, you're, hi, you're there.
Oh, oh, we got a problem here. I don't know if you have two speakers going on for the meeting at the same time?
That may be a Zoom crasher, Mr. Chair.
What was that?
Might be a Zoom crasher.
Your Zoom crashed?
That may be a Zoom crasher, is what I'm saying. That may not be a real comment. I'm not sure.
Okay, let's, uh, if it's possible to see what's going on with that one, let's go ahead and move on to phone 6478. Matthew, if it's possible to, for you to try and work, um, with Amanda, and let's go with 46478.
Can you hear me?
Let's go ahead and mute Amanda Brock, and we'll come back to Amanda Brock. It looks like she was able to get some, uh, sound, and we want to make sure to get her comment, but let's go ahead and move on to phone, phone 6478.
Amanda Brock is also Ahava Rose--
So that's me.
--who already spoke. Ahava Rose and Amanda Brock are the same person.
Okay.
There, there is a lot of people talking, so can I talk now?
Yes, now it is your turn. Sorry about the confusion.
All right. Good morning, everybody, and my name is Madeline Beuler, and I like to talk about, first, I'd like to thank you, Steve, who spoke up. It's very important that we speak up, and it's maybe not exactly, um, targeted to the supervisors and the whole board, because you have your agenda and you have to follow this. But the listeners who listen in and are on the verge of not knowing what to do, or on the other side of the mainstream indoctrination, so that's why I'm speaking up here. And I like to say that it needs at least 12 years to approve a vaccination. It needs a lot of tests and everything, and so now they approved it just within a few months, and a Pfizer vaccination, and I think, uh, nobody should take it. I mean, that's, that's, that's not, I mean, it's like totally, um, not, not good. And I like to repeat myself about this hydroxychloroquine, like, uh, the medical doctor, MD, a real MD, because I know you like to hear that. It's Vladimir Zelenko. He had, he has 99% success in treating the people with this. And this is a benevolent drug, if one can say it like this. It's not like a vaccine who, one doesn't know what's in there, and, uh, very toxic. So I would, uh, kind of like see this more, uh, publicized in your board. Then also, um, more effort to lower the cases of death, of cancer, diabetes, uh, heart diseases and all that. Nothing is put in for that, no effort. And I know why, but, you know, uh, it's, of course, it's the Big Pharma. And it's money. It's all about money. So vaccination is not the key. You mentioned that vaccination is the key. That's not the key, according to what I said before. And so, um, yeah, I hope everybody is well, and all that, uh, masking and everything gets out of the way, because it doesn't work anyway. Fauci said it in the very beginning, that it doesn't work. One has to wear 10 masks over each other, and, uh, you can imagine how we--
Your three minutes are up. If you can finish your comment.
Okay, thank you. I'm finished.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's do Amanda Brock, uh, since we had a little confusion there. Let's see if we can get, uh, the sound going.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. That's working better. Um, so, Dr. Pace, I would just, I'm curious, what not fully vaccinated encompasses? Um, I have some questions. If I were to, uh, want to get, uh, the Pfizer doses, and I wanted to know what the ingredients are, would, are you familiar enough with them to tell me what is SM102? Um, could you also sign a liability form for me, accepting responsibility for medical bills if I were injured? Um, I also want to know, do you know about, um, Chantix is a drug made by Pfizer? And it, uh, I believe it was approved in 2006 by the FDA, um, but it's recently been linked to cancer? And I think that was after 15 years of FDA approval? Another thing I want to know is, um, can you produce an analysis on your own of more than five different ivermectin studies for next week, if that's a possibility? Um, I'd like to get a broader, um, idea of what the actual, the rest of the studies say. Um, do you also have any more trust in acquired and natural immunity? I think it's really important to boost our immune systems at this time, and, uh, I've been following a nuclear cardiologist and physicist, and JD, Dr. Richard Fleming, uh, his website is theflemmingmethod.com, and, uh, he has a lot of, um, prospective studies on his website that look like they have a really positive outlook for various kinds of treatments that have worked and have saved people's lives, so that we can go through this without having to put, um, chemicals that we don't know what they are in our body. Um, that's all. Thank you.
It would be very easy, um, if you had the same name, rather than logging in as two different names. It's, uh, seems a little deceiving and deceitful. And, uh, your questions, um, I, I will go ahead and answer some of those questions for you. Uh, Dr. Pace, feel free if you want to respond. Just look at the numbers of what's happening, okay? Yes, there are chemicals in the processing of creating pharmaceuticals, absolutely, 100%. It is not just an apple off a tree that's going to solve your problem. But look at the numbers. Go, go, go into a hospital and see what's happening. Nobody that works in a hospital is having a fun time right now. And, and a large majority of the people that are finding themselves in the ER are due to shortness of breath, and there is no coincidence as to why that is the case. Um, and it happens to be that those who are unvaccinated are the majority of those cases versus the vaccinated, meaning the vaccination is working. At this moment in time, myself and the board are not forcing you to take the vaccine. Uh, the questions, you can have those questions all you want, but the fact of the matter is the data shows that it is helping, and that's what matters. We need to do what we can to help our community. Um, three people died over the past weekend. Those people were unvaccinated. So, uh, you can be as deceitful as you want by logging in as Ahava Rose and Amanda Brock and changing the speed of your voice and not have the actual goal to come and see us right here in the audience and hide behind a screen. Um, but please, come on. That's childish. Dr. Pace, if you want to respond.
Well, you know, I mean, I think really, from my point of view, what we're trying to do is to save lives and to keep people as healthy as possible. And a lot of the preventative stuff is a great idea, but we're in a different situation right now, which is a pandemic. And, um, so, you know, any medical intervention does have risks, so the vaccines, there are some risks for sure. And, uh, but when you start looking at the benefits versus the risks, it's, uh, clearly, uh, prudent to go ahead and move forward with these things. And, um, you know, so I'm not sure why folks are so invested in kind of this, uh, challenging me to take personal responsibility for things. It's, uh, or to kind of spread this, um, um, this other kind of information. So I, it's confusing to me why people are so invested in doing that, but, um, all we can do is just sort of try to roll out what we think is the best thing and how to, how to minimize risk. So, um, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. All right, I see no further comments in the Zoom room or in the board. Anything from the board members? Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I just, I want to follow up on what you were saying, Supervisor Sabatier. This isn't fear-mongering. Three people died over the weekend, and those families are mourning, they're suffering. They were members of our community, and they were unvaccinated, and this is real. And this is about taking care of our community. Please do not minimize these deaths, because we feel them. We all feel them.
Supervisor Simon?
You know what? As has been stated many times by myself and the board members, what we're attempting to do is provide the information so you can make your individual decisions. We understand what is going on. The pandemic is real. We are having loss of life, and we're attempting to do everything we can to put the best decision in your hands. This information that we bring forward, we'll continue to do it. Uh, we know there is going to be opposition. You know individuals want to make their own decisions. We are at the point in this pandemic right now that we know there is an opportunity with the vaccinations to limit the sickness. If you are going to be infected, even if you are, uh, vaccinated, it limits your opportunity to be hospitalized or death, and we're going to continue to press this message as much as possible, as Jessica and Supervisor Sabatier said, and the rest of us, you know. So that would put us at 70 at this point. We're at 67, 72, uh, deaths here in Lake County. And we're going to do everything we can to provide the information, we're going to make the decision. We've said it before, if you are not going to take the vaccination, please, wear a mask. Do your part to help the other community members if you make that decision, and we'll continue to push this on. There is no Big Pharma agenda. This is not something any of us could foresee as we, uh, took our positions here as supervisor, and we're going to work hard to just continue to provide the information. As you know, we have other subjects on this agenda. We are going to, uh, try and give you an opportunity for testing vaccinations, if that's your choice. If not, we'll hopefully help implement other, um, you know, conditions that will help stop the spread of this, this disease. It is happening every day. It is affecting businesses, families, every day, as we sit here. There will probably be more that happen this afternoon. So we're going to continue with that message. We appreciate everybody. I've never heard this board shut anyone down. Uh, you can have your opinions. You're able to do that, and we'll continue that opportunity for an open conversation, even if we do not agree with you. But we will not sit here and be berated, uh, that we are, you know, bringing genocide or other things like that have been said, and it's, it's absolutely ridiculous. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Supervisor. And with that, uh, thank you very much, Dr. Pace, for that presentation.